To order for uh uh Canby Planning Commission by December thirteenth. And um we will proceed, so we'll start with the invocation and uh well. Thank everybody for being here tonight and coming together on our Zoom calls. This is a special evening, this is the last uh last meeting of the year two thousand and our twenty twenty one. And uh doing the the work for the citizens of Canby and hoping that we've done a good job over the last year in your name, amen. Okay, so um pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Individ- and with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so um Don, you're you're up.
Chair Savory, um this is a recognition, I'm just sad to see um. You go as the chair and Commissioner Boatright to both, both of you are stepping down, I just wanted to say a few words. And um we have a gift for you as well, speaking of in person would would be nicer to do this than video, but. We will get, we will hand this to you, um but just to recognize um your work, uh both of you uh. Commissioner Savory, our Chair Savory and Commissioner Boatright. Uh we we have some plaques here and I think you might be able to see these hopefully if I hold them up. Uh presented to John Savory in appreciation for your eight years of service with the Canby Planning Commission. We are grateful for your service, thank you for shaping our community and making Canby a better place to live. This is what these look like here, so um John, when you're over, you know, visiting with your grandchildren, you can stop by and. Um we have a plaque for you and we also have one for Larry Boatright, for Commissioner Boatright and same thing. And so we'll be getting ahold of him, but um I was just gonna leave it open for the other commissioners to say a few words as well. But I just wanna say you've been great to work with, um and I really appreciate your leadership.
Well, thank you, sir, it's been, it's been an honor for me to be a part of this whole thing for the last eight years. Seen seen the, I've seen the city grow in so many different ways and overcome some very difficult situations, so. And I want to thank my fellow commissioners, uh outstanding people that I've worked with over the years and there. Are some very outstanding people on the board right now, so thank you very much, I really truly appreciate the opportunity. So um Laney, do we have any citizen input for our non-agenda items?
No, we don't.
Oh, I skipped the consent agenda, sorry about that. Um anything, I'm just kind of discombobulated right now, sorry about that. Um so are we going on the consent agenda, is there anything that we need to be doing on that? We've resigned everything, um. Yeah, do we have to have a motion of any kind?
No.
There are no, and there are no uh no minutes from the previous meeting?
No, there isn't.
Um, okay, so we have uh no new business and the public hearing that we have. Um is Ocada America. Uh site and design review, lot line adjustment, an application for a property located at three six eight. And uh Sequoia Parkway, uh three twenty seven South Sequoia Parkway. Was scheduled to be heard on this date, but applicant Ocada American, boy, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Requested the hearing to be delayed until a date certain and that date is January tenth twen- uh, I think. You meant twenty twenty two on this.
That would be correct, yes, yes, you are correct.
Okay, so we'll move past that, and so items of interest from you, Don.
Uh, thank you Chair Savory, um just a few items, uh some of them are listed and I have a few others to add. Uh and just to recognize um that this is our last uh meeting for the year, uh will be starting in January. Um and hopefully uh at that point, we're hoping to add uh the the commissioners that are that are the vacancies. Uh there are interviews that are going to be set up for that, currently we have uh three applicants that have submitted on that. And I believe from one of the council members, there may be one or two more uh being added, so. Um we're trying to work to uh fill those those positions, my goal would be hopefully to have those filled by the next. Hearing in January, January tenth, uh that's a little out of my control to some degree, um and that, but that's our objective. Uh we still have a forum with the folks that are remaining that are current on the planning commission. Um I'm hoping you all can make it on the tenth in case we don't have other ads. Uh we do have three hearing items that night, uh they're industrial uh applications, uh but that's the first thing I wanted to mention. Um the other item I was gonna mention is there's advisory boards, and this is for the Department of Land Conservation and Development Grants we've received. Uh there's a housing advisory board uh for the housing needs analysis that we will be completing over the next year. It's housing needs and housing production, and then there's an economic opportunity advisory board, so an economic advisory board as well for another grant from the state. From DLCD, um I did send that out uh in an email to see if there's interest in that and Commissioner. Uh Patton and Commissioner Mills were both interested uh in that and others maybe as well, we just have two slots. Here um that we're looking for, we're also gonna be looking at two council members and they will be voting on that on Wednesday. Uh for those same, for those same um advisory boards, uh or advisory committees rather. Um so I just wanted to um ask Commissioner Patton and Mills, you know, and if there are others that are interested, uh please. Feel free to speak on that, but um we, I would like at this meeting to cut land on which um which advisory committee you would prefer to be on. But I also wanna recognize that if others are interested, uh this is your time to to chime in.
I would be interested in uh in helping, you said there's only two spots though and you have two volunteers, so I'm not. Uh I could go either way, if uh there's spot open, I'm I'm willing to, willing to show up at the meetings.
Okay. Um, this is this Jeff, I put my name forward, uh in the eventuality, we didn't have enough other volunteers, so uh. Uh James, I think you can have it if you want it.
Sure, yeah.
And if Don's okay.
Oh, I I would welcome that and I, Commissioner Mills, I appreciate, cause I kinda felt that that's why you were doing that as well, I was like. You know, you rock basically was what I was thinking when you sent that email and, but yeah, I, you know, just, James, I think you would, you know. Commissioner He, uh you and Commissioner Patton would do a great job, so now you can arm wrestle over which committee. You would like to be on housing advisory or the economic advisory, and I I don't know which of those two you guys are interested in. Um but I would just, I'd need one person on each, and they're gonna run kind of what, maybe I should back up a little bit about. Kind of what that will entail, it's over about the next year, um housing, before you commit. The housing advisory uh committee is about seven meetings that will be happening, seven advisory meetings. Uh it'll be addressing housing type affordability, urban growth expansion to accommodate the twenty year population forecast. The economic advisory committee also running separate from that with a different advisory uh committee. About three advisory committee meetings, and it will be advising on the need for employment lands, type of employment and urban growth expansion to accommodate. Employment needs over the next twenty years. So that, those are kind of the thumbnail.
I I don't really have an attachment to either, uh I guess uh Jason, uh you can chime in on this, uh let me know how you feel, but. I know uh I'd be interested in the housing meetings, uh but uh. Yeah, I'm not sure how Jason feels about it, I could go either way.
That's fine with me, I can do the uh economic one.
Great, no, and I think you guys will, you know, it'll be great and there'll be some reporting back, I would expect. To the planning commission as well, we haven't really talked about what that is, but I think that um. At least from a update perspective, not like voting on anything, but I think that'd be helpful as we go through that process. So um that, thank you, I appreciate that, um we're kind of in an exciting time here with these, these will end up defining a lot of things like. You know, buildable land assessment and kind of where we're going in the future, and then that'll lead to the comprehensive plan update. Which we're anticipating to start about this time next year, so um those will be, there's a lot of long range planning that'll be happening over. Basically the next two to three years um in the city, which is kind of, we're kind of playing catch up to some degree, but. Uh it's it's nice when the state provides grant money, um I thought they weren't gonna give us as much on the economic one and they gave us everything we asked for. So um that was really awesome, so uh we're signing the contracts, we should have the professional service agreements um. Uh in place by the end of the year for for everything that's needed, um so we'll be starting in January, I'm guessing that. The committee meetings probably would not be until February because there's gonna be some startup time, but um. And I'll, there'll be a full schedule, I'll give you the full, uh we'll give you the schedule and the milestones so you guys know. How to plan things out, so you're not, you have flexibility and I appreciate it because you guys are already on the planning commission. And that's a lot of time already, so um try to give you as much detail as I can, so thank you again. Um a few more items, just to go through with you, um Commissioner Heave and Commissioner Mills, we do have your iPads, if you wanna come down, they have the. The city email on them, so I do have those available for both of you and. Uh I'm kind of lost track of who has and who has not gotten their um city iPads back to us, but if you haven't, go ahead and. Give me your iPads and we'll have our IT folks put the city email on them. And then just on future upcoming hearings, I talked about January tenth and just so you kind of know what's going on and. In January twenty fourth, we'll be covering food carts, that'll be a hearing item, we'll actually have text, uh draft text for that, uh so that's another one coming. Uh and then February fourteen, the Canby High School, they have a new building that is gonna go through design review. There's probably also another application that might be with that same night uh on the fourteenth. Uh and then as we get more uh items on schedule, there are still some pending uh. Larger industrial projects that have yet to be scheduled and we'll give you updates on those as we have those. Wanna make sure that I'm not forgetting anything, let me just take a quick look at the rest here, um. I think that's it, I think that's um covers everything uh for um. That I was gonna cover here and um Chair Savory, I'm gonna bring it back to you, um but that was all I had.
Hey, thank you so much, um any uh input from any of the commissioners that you would like to impart your wisdom? To uh to our planning staff, Commissioner Mills?
Oh, I have no wisdom to impart, John, I just wanted to wish you well and uh. Look forward to bumping into you at Cutford's here now and again and uh and uh hope you're able to get in as much mischief uh and fun as you can, so. Look forward to keep an eye on us, will you?
I I will, thank you so much, uh any input from you, Commissioner Patton?
Yes, first, I just wanna take this opportunity to thank you and Larry for your years of service on the planning commission. Uh I know that at times it's been very hard to see uh sort of uh how things have worked out. Uh but I think you both have done an incredible job and it is always uh a huge loss when someone with the amount, with the depth and breadth of history and knowledge. Uh such as you two have leaving a board like this, it's 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 always, you're never ever able to really fill that hole, so. Uh you know, I understand you wanting to uh divest yourself of some of this stuff, I'm sure you have plenty of projects that you will keep you busy. Uh but thank you very much for both of you uh for your time and service to uh this community. Um, a couple other things I just have on my list here, uh the Ocada one, is this the second time that's been pushed back?
It it has and I, it it's um, we've actually had an extension, they gave us an extension beyond the hundred and twenty day rule, so. It's gone that long and uh some of it's, it's it's related to um. Uh the traffic evaluation and the applicants wanted to provide more information so we could consider that uh information in the application.
Okay, um and I wasn't sure if there's, if they will run into trouble with uh if it's delayed much more or is there contingencies for that?
Well, there are, and that was in the extension that was granted, and I think it goes actually to February, so we don't want it to go to February, we wanna. Give them resolution, um they were the ones asking for the additional time to provide information, that information did not come forth to us. Um and so essentially, they said, let's go ahead and continue it and then we got to the point where we got up against the hundred and twenty day rule and then. They have to give us a letter to extend it beyond uh the hundred and twenty day, which they have, and then we have a date certain, I believe it's. The February fourteenth uh which would be e- even further out, so.
Okay, um the a couple other things that I seem to remember there was talk of the um. The warehouse that is tied to the the Amazon coming into town, that that was coming back to us for. Uh review, is that one of the things that are coming up sooner than later next year?
Yes, and that one's also going through uh the traffic evaluation, they've received the um. Uh they asked the DKS complete the traffic impact statement for that project, uh that statement's been provided to them, they're reviewing that. Uh and so is ODOT and so is Clackamas County, um that application has actually not technically been submitted. Um yet because the traffic piece is the first piece that has to be resolved and uh but we're expecting the application to be submitted shortly. I can't give you an EPA on when that's gonna happen, but it will definitely, I mean, they'll be, they'll be anxious to get that on hearing um. As soon as we can uh get that on hearing, so that will be in the next, probably the next few months, uh you know. Two, two, three months out, I, it's just, this is a rough estimate.
I think, and I don't know what the, and the my fellow commissioners can weigh in on this, I think when that application comes up for uh. Rediscussion, it, we, you may want to plan to have that be the only thing on the agenda. It is highly likely that now that the cat is, the, now that the smile is out of the bag. Uh you, that there could be more people that want to participate in that uh, in that, in that um. Public comment section uh of the meeting.
And and so noted, I think it's a good idea um to provide that and hopefully, you know. It'll be very clear, I mean, the goal of staff is to make it extremely clear as to what the standards are and kind of what is being asked of 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 Amazon and. With with specifics on and that'll be at the hearing of what they're actually planning to do.
Okay, uh the next one, DKS, we had talked about bringing them back in. For another session so that folks can ask them, have there, has there been a date decided as to when that work session is going to be?
There's not been a date, I'm actually working with them, I gave them your comments, I spoke with them last week and uh from our last uh discussions. Um I need to work with our administrator on setting up a date for that, um and that, that is important, that actually is one of the items, it's on the. City Council's uh work session on their agenda for Wednesday. Not not the date setting, but the fact that it's a priority for them coming back and there's a list, there's a short list of items. Um so my goal, sooner than later, I'd rather, I mean, I would really like to get something on in February personally, but that's not my decision. Uh to do, I'm not sure if we're gonna get something on in January.
Okay, um, this is, this is a, an educational question for me. Um I have some uh some citizens asking me some questions about developments and such in the city and uh. When I say this, you're probably gonna know what I'm talking about, um when it comes to a simple lot line adjustment. Uh but for two pieces of property, that is something that the planning commission weighs in on, that does not come to us, correct?
That's not something that you see, it's it's not considered a type three application, it's it's a lesser application and you're correct.
Okay, my next question is, if a group of citizens around the area where this may be going on. Is, do they, do they have the ability to uh like, there's a name for it, like um petition? A challenge similar to uh like how they take one of our decisions to the city council? Are they able to do a petition to say we want the planning commission to review this, is that, is that a thing or is that not a mechanism?
There, there is a mechanism, when you get to a type one and type two applications at clearer, at clearer and objective standards. And so what you normally are saying, part of the reason the planning commission is even saying it is it has discretion. They're not a hundred percent clear and objective, um so when you have a type one or type two, the decision that's made administratively could be elevated on appeal to the planning commission. It would be, it would go on appeal though, that way they would have to appeal the underlying decision, there's the, there's some underlying state. Uh expectations around ministerial applications that they not be essentially. Um manipulated to cause them to be not in a category that's not ministerial in the hearing. Um this has to do with the state law and how things are processed, but the objective is. That things that are clear and objective should stay clear and objective regardless of how much somebody may not like it as a neighbor.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure, I just wanna make sure that I am answering these questions uh correctly. Um and then finally, I will bring my iPad in either tomorrow or Wednesday uh to get that worked on.
Sounds good, and.
And that was it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Jason, um Commissioner He, do you have any uh anything you'd like to review with staff?
Yeah, yeah, uh well, I just wanna say uh thank you for your service, uh Chair Savory and your service to Canby and uh. Glad I got to uh learn from you, so uh appreciate the opportunity, but uh. But then uh, yeah, for Dawn, I had, I also have been uh having a couple like people in the city like bring up. You know, the traffic issue with Amazon and then uh, like I hear a lot of people talk about the tax exemptions in the industrial area and I. I I guess I don't fully understand uh the the exemptions enough to give them like a a clear answer and. Could you kind of explain what kind of a, what exactly these exemptions are, like uh?
And um Commissioner He, I I probably would not do a good job of justice to that either and what I would recommend is. Um Jamie Sickle, our Economic Development Administrator or Director, uh would be a good person to speak to on those. Uh just at a high level, um they're, I think they're kind of intended to promote. Economic development, but in terms of like how much it's waived versus what would not be waived, I would not do justice to that. Uh and I likely would get that information incorrect, um that's, that's something that's more the minister, a city administrator, economic development director. Than it is more, that's more with them than it is with planning.
All right, well, fair enough, I can get ahold of her, but uh, yeah, that's all, that's all I had for tonight, so, yeah, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
I'd offer on that same question, Commissioner He, that, you know, our real jurisdiction here is land use. And our real tool is the code, and I think that, I'm just gonna say it, I think we made a mistake with that hearing, I was. I voted and that's good, that's democracy, but uh I think that that's, for future reference, you know. Uh council sets policy and we look at land use and the regulations and it's very important that we look very closely at those and I think sometimes. We've fallen short.
All right, so that's, all right, so my understanding that that's not necessarily our purview, so to speak, but. I still would like to understand it.
The code is our purview, not not the economic part.
Thank you.
And if I may, real quick, I think there's two things that you're gonna wanna look at, James, and that is. I believe some of those big task credits that a lot of people, like Columbia Distribution, took advantage of are county. Uh are are a county program, and then the other one is, if you go, if you look at the rules and regulations for the. Uh industrial park, there are incentives and payouts for number of employees and how long they're retained and stuff. There are, those are separate and I believe those are within the the stipulations of the um. Of the industrial park or the urban renewed, urban, urban renewal district. And you'll just wanna double check if this plot of land is actually in the urban renewal district or. There's some of that that's not actually in the urban renewal district and so that Jamie should be able to help you with that.
All right, awesome, thank you, Jason.
Uh Commissioner Hutchinson, do you have any input for staff?
Well, first I wanna say thank you uh Chair Savory uh for your service and also for hiring me to be on this board. I remember that you were there along with the mayor and staff, um and uh. I I find it hard to believe that I'm one of the people who've been here for a while now, I don't even, I haven't even been through a whole term yet. You know, and I'm not sure I'm ready to assume the mantle of. But thank you very much. But thank you very much. Um, uh, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Well, I, one last thing, again, it's been an honor to to serve the. On this uh, committee and uh, and serve the citizens of Canby, so thank you all. And now for the last time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Savory, I had, what did I offer, thing to staff if I could?
Sure.
Uh, go for that motion. Uh, just given that we're expecting to have three hearings on that next meeting. I'd ask staff to work very hard to uh. Economize the time required to make the presentations so that we can get through this and we're uh, we're gonna be pressed, so. And I'm sure you'll be doing that, but I just wanted to make sure you had a strong vote.
So, so noted, and um. Uh, I'm hoping that we can expedite those as well and and maybe to even to some degree. Since there are overlapping elements, you know, not that we're gonna abbreviate them, you know, subsequently, but. That we'll look to see what we can do on that and I'm hoping that if we do have. Um, other members joining on the tenth, I mean, we will, this is an aside, we'll need to have a vote for a chair and vice chair. And that would be something that would happen, I believe, on the tenth, but that's another item that we would probably add on.
All the more reason to make sure you've got a good economy in the presentations with the new chair.
Exactly, yep. There's a lot, yeah, yeah.
And I think another challenge of this is, I mean, just looking at the calendar. Um, if we were, if you were to ensure that there is a slate of commissioners by the tenth. That means all those interviews and stuff have to happen. And all that gets done, cause for the city council meeting on January fifth, that is their next meeting, correct?
Yes, and and I, you're correct and.
So they, they would be appointing these people on the fifth. And then four days, five days later, being drawn into this discussion and expected to. Vote on it. I, ah, it's a, you know, I don't know. This seems like a, seems like a little hot potato here. I don't know.
Welcome to the jungle.
It is. Okay, so maybe the twenty fourth is more realistic. I've just, I, today I was writing emails to try to encourage. That we would get this done and you're correct. I mean, it would, there would be a lot of presumptions on this. And even to the extent of giving somebody. A good amount of time to review a staff report. You know, our staff reports rather, three of them in this case, and that's unfair if we were gonna give them, hey, here's your reading assignment for the weekend. So I mean, that, there has, that has to be weighed out. I'm just trying to push this as hard as I can. Knowing that we have these positions that are open, um, realizing that we're in the, we're in the midst of holidays. And everything else that, you know, uh, so as quickly as we can get these people, the net, new members on, that's the goal. I don't wanna be unrealistic and maybe I'm way, way too optimistic here, um. Especially with your analysis, so that, yeah.
I'm a big fan of dreaming big, Don. I mean, it's not a, it's not a problem, but I, but I, I do think, you know. And and this is not to like rush Chair Savory outdoor, but I do think that regardless of how many people are. Appointed, not appointed, I really think that on the tenth. Whatever happens, we need to, we need to hold elections for a chair and vice chair.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate and since you, you know, we're dealing with folks that have been on, I mean, I'm guessing. Somebody on the planning commission for the first time or in a while even if they had been on. Is not gonna raise their hand to be vice chair or chair. That's not typically how it works, but.
You never know. We live in a new day and age, Don. We live in a new day and age.
Yeah, I mean, no, we do. I'm just, that's, I would say any board I've ever worked on, it would be really unusual for you to say, no, I wanna be chair. And then you never even like it, like. Gone through anything, so I, yeah. So yeah, so so noted, I mean.
As well. I'm sorry. Will this be the new meeting format as well with the uh, with the, with the uh, staff going second?
Uh, we have not um, brought forth uh, before you yet, the um. Change in our ordinance, it's needed to do that and we need to do that first, so we're gonna continue. Staff will go first. I think what we're gonna try to do to um, everyone's hopefully um. Satisfaction is to abbreviate this without losing content. Um, so that that, we're going through this at a faster clip and it's not. Dragging on. We will also be sending that back. The code changes, that'll be one of the first items that we need to bring forward, forth to the planning commission. For recommendation and that has to go to the council, so that has not yet happened.
Thank you. Commissioner He, but, uh, did I get everybody? I wanna make sure that everybody had a chance for input.
Yeah, you, you already got me.
I got you, okay. Um, okay, so now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hold in favor, say aye.
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 And thank you all and enjoy the new year.